Alright, thanks. Alright, so we're going to call on the Capital Financial Planning Subcommittee meeting of the Hamilton Wenham Regional School District to order at 7:06. First order of the agenda is introductions, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Kukkenberger. So my name is Jean Lee, I'm the Chair of the Subcommittee and a member of the just, uh, school committee, obviously. Can I go this way?
Stacy Maderneck, member of the school committee.
Julie Kukkenberger, Interim Superintendent in the Hamilton Wenham School District.
Vincent Leoni, Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Administration for the School District.
Michelle Horgan, School Committee Member.
Jeff Hubbard, Chair of the Hamilton Board of Selectmen.
Chris Wallack, Town Accountant for the Town of Wenham.
Anthony Insalvi, the Town Administrator for the Town of Wenham.
Joe Domalovich, the Town Manager for the Town of Hamilton.
Alex Beegan, Chair of the Wenham FinCom. And Carrie Jelsma has joined as well, to the side here, also another Wenham FinCom member and liaison to the School Committee.
Christina Shankhargrove, excuse me, FinCom Liaison from Hamilton.
Marissa Batista, Finance Director for the Town of Hamilton.
Alright, so take it from here. We do have a slideshow prepared tonight just to kind of guide us through the agenda, but with the, the tech isn't working quite well, but I'll still project it over here even though knowing folks at home won't be able to see it as well. So we worked, just wanted to start by clearly stating our objective for asking you all to come to this meeting. It's our hope to begin to establish trust and credibility through transparency and collaboration between the towns and the school department in order to best serve our students and our community, our communities at large. We worked through introductions, so the first thing on the agenda is really to just establish our why for coming together and having these joint meetings. From what I can see and what I've learned, this isn't, you've had joint meetings in the past, and so I just want to make sure now with all of, like, the newer leadership that we have in our communities, that we're really clear about our purpose. And I've really paced out our agenda for us so that we can spend about ten minutes on each item that should get us through the agenda at, right at eight o'clock, as scheduled, maybe a few minutes after because we started a little late. But we believe deeply that when folks understand why we do what we do, then we have, we're able to garner much more support and commitment to the work. And knowing that budget season can be tough, there's a lot of tough decisions that we have to make, I think it would be very helpful for me to understand, you know, what, why do we want to come together? Nobody, we're all busy, we all have a lot of things to do, so, so what's our real purpose? And we can just sort of have an open discussion about that, and we're gonna jot down some notes and capture them and share them out with everybody afterward. So, I don't wanna start with, why you think it's important for us to come together in this way?
I think for, for Hamilton, obviously we have, one of our largest issues is our property tax, the cost of property tax for our residents, and the school is two-thirds of our budget, so it's obviously a large driver of our property tax. So it's important that we understand what's going on and what the drivers for you all are.
If I could just piggyback on that, also, obviously, in the age of two and a half here in Massachusetts, the Town of Hamilton's budget is limited in the ways we can raise money, it's really only through property taxation. And we're only allowed to increase our levy annually by two and a half percent. Given that, we really need to have, you know, an open discussion about what that means for both sides. We do our best every year to live within that, and we understand, we, I think everybody in Hamilton that I've met, most of them either were born or raised and grew up here or have moved here for the school system. They all want to support the schools, they all want, Hamilton to want them to be one of the best school districts in the entire state. That said, we, there are fiscal realities we all have to live with. I'm very encouraged by us having this joint meeting now. When I was the new Town Manager here a year ago, we didn't have a meeting similar to this until six weeks from now, and it was a lot less open and collaborative than this meeting is already getting off to last week. Last year, I think, we sat around a table, everybody got a chance to tell what their view was, and then two weeks later, the school department gave us a budget that they wanted anyway. So there wasn't really any collaboration in that process. So I'm, I'm encouraged by this process and happy to be a part of it.
As am I, on behalf of Wenham. So thank you Julie for, for hosting us and to the School Committee. Definitely encouraging to have a bit more of a collaborative environment, or, you know, that's the expectation anyway, so to meet more regularly earlier in the process. And I think the timing is key. Certainly, we've met many times over the past few years, in many cases had productive discussions about the budget and understanding each other's challenges and positions, and, in some cases, opportunities to improve the process. But we haven't really capitalized on that process as it relates to timing, to Joe's point. Generally speaking, our joint meetings have felt a little bit kind of statutory in nature, like we're checking the box following a formulaic calendar in which a handful of meetings take place at this critical time period whereby there's limited opportunity for everyone to really kind of dig into each other's numbers, recommended budgets, and have the opportunity to pose questions and understand processes and how we arrived at certain things. So I think through meetings and discussions hopefully like this, excuse me, we can understand where there are some knowledge shortfalls, certainly we have some on our side as it relates to the school's process philosophies related around, for example, certain, you know, fiscal components in the budget process. And the more we understand those, the more we can better appreciate the challenges of the Regional School District when it comes time for, for a budget. So, you know, not too much window dressing, I mean, I think to your point, we have a lot of tough decisions to make in this budget process, definitely in Wenham, we're up against two prior fiscal years, current one, Prop 2 and F override, and the year prior, probably not a surprise to anybody, and, and we might very well face a third this year, so the fiscal levy limit challenges persist, and all the more reason why Wenham FinCom and working also with the TA and POS will, will be looking to make really smart and at times difficult fiscal decisions for FY21.
Great. Anyone else want to add?
I think I would just add to that, for the, from the Hamilton FinCom CCR obligation as understanding and analyzing the financial issues so that we can advise the people of the town. And so I agree with you that the, having an open process so that we can understand it, at the very minimum, we can understand what's going on and be able to explain that to the citizens when it comes time to, time to vote. So I think just the critical sharing of information and understanding throughout the process is really critical, and so I, though I haven't been involved in the past, I do appreciate the ability to get involved early.
Could I just add one more thing? I mean, just what the appointed, appointed and elected members of this body here might not know is that Julie and Anthony and I and our finance directors have already been meeting, and, and that, again, is different from last year, and we're trying to be more open, sharing information and more honest with each other, and I, that's why I feel so encouraged, it's not just that we have twelve of us around the table tonight, but it's that we actually started this process four weeks ago, the six of us getting together, just being honest with each other about what we wanted to see and how we develop our budgets this year, so. And prior to that, we toured the schools with the Facilities Director and the Interim Superintendent to get an understanding of what your physical challenges are in the, in the structures. So, you know, that's what we need, we need to know that so we can bring it back to our towns and, and help, help them understand what, what we're trying to do, so, thank you.
Good point.
So I'll, just for everyone's benefit, add, and we'll talk a little bit later about the process, we've launched our process officially internally with our leadership team, that does involve getting input from some of the teacher leaders in each of the buildings as well, and this is feeling really different for the leadership team. I just met with the curriculum leaders, the six twelve curriculum leaders this afternoon, and they're kind of like, well, what's going on, what, what's happening? One of the things, after our presentation last week, we did send out a letter to our entire staff outlining some strategic actions we're taking in the current fiscal year to try to close our budget deficit that we have, and so currently we are experiencing about a three hundred and ten, three hundred and nine, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars exactly, budget deficit, and so that really has to do with some unbudgeted student needs, some unbudgeted personnel needs, but also some strategic personnel recruitment, onboarding strategy to sort of counter what we, what we first learned in early July, which was worse than the current state scenario in terms of the deficit. And with that, it's really working with our, our schools and our teachers in our schools and our principals in our schools to really understand, you know, why we're putting a curtailment in place and what we hope to accomplish with that, and part of that is a strategy for FY21, because we're trying to mitigate the need for us to access either circuit breaker reimbursement funds or access and deficiency if it gets to that point. So I'm not sure if everyone knew that that was a strategic action that we already took.
Julie, could you, real quickly, for the folks that weren't in our earlier meeting and aren't on the School Committee, because I know you folks heard about that already, could you explain what the curtailment is and what it, how it's different from, you know, a spending freeze, for instance, or some other, other measure that could have been taken?
Sure. So typically a spending freeze is, you're not purchasing anything except essential, items essential to operate, day-to-day operations. That is not what a curtailment is. A curtailment is more about a spend, like being, a spending conservation. So what we did was go through an exercise with each of our principals and directors who have a portion of the budget that they're responsible for, basically line by line looking at discretionary funds and saying, what did, what was budgeted in FY20, what has been spent to date, and then of that remaining balance, what are the plans? Are there any investments or purchases that we could postpone to, either to a prior, or to an, you know, an upcoming fiscal year, or, you know, just in reassessing our needs, do we need all of those budgeted funds? And the strategy behind that is to try to generate cost savings throughout the year. The tricky part with a school budget is that we don't typically have a lot of discretionary spending within the school budget to begin with, because the bulk of our budget is personnel. And that personnel is really driven by student need in terms of classroom teachers, but also teaching assistants that are often driven by individualized education plans, and then other essential employees, custodians, food service workers, principals, and things like that. So by doing this, it's, A, bringing a district-wide awareness to our current fiscal reality, it's also, I think, sending a strong message to our community that we're trying to be good stewards of your tax dollars, and although we asked you for these monies because we had plans to use them to support this school year, we're trying to rethink and reassess, because we're always learning new information about our kids and about the needs that they have, and it's a really fluid, volatile process all, all the time, every budget year. So we put that letter out last week to staff, saying to them, still ask, we still need to know what you need, the answer might be no, or not yet, or can we talk more about that, but we still, it's really important to us and to the community that you all understand, like, what are the unmet needs as we try to be as conservative as we can? And that's our plan moving forward with the budget as well, to just put it in plain English, here's what's in the budget, here's what's not, and then talking about what the implications are of that.
So that, I think that's helpful for everybody here, and it's good to hear that you're taking those steps yourselves. I think when the news first broke in early July that the School District was facing a large budget deficit, just two weeks after the new fiscal year started, there was some panic or some, some chaos, and I'm glad to see that you've got control of it, that you've, you've already made strides towards closing that gap, and I'm hopeful that, you know, your strategies will continue to show positive results.
One of the other things that we've done as well, with all of the turnover that we've had, so we have eleven new, what I consider district-wide positions, so that's central office and one principal, a lot of, that's a lot of transition at one time, and what, what Vinnie and I have been trying to do is quickly assess sort of, what's the workflow, who's doing what, is there, how do we make sure that we have appropriate redundancy, but also really high-quality customer service? And so we've eliminated two part-time HR positions in order to bring in one full-time position, because we believe that's gonna improve customer service, and there's a cost savings measure there. And we've also reduced one FTE in our IT department through attrition, so trying to, as opportunities come up, be as savvy as we can without impacting the classroom experience. We're really cognizant of the value that the education in Hamilton Wenham has, and trying to make sure that any decisions that we're making to be fiscally conservative aren't affecting directly the classroom in that way. Would you add anything, Vinnie?
I'm just writing it down.
Okay. Capturing it all. So anything else we want to sort of put out on the table about why we feel it's important to come together in this way?
You know, everybody pretty much expressed the same thing, working together is, is really the way to go, it's to help us get across that finish line. We all gonna make some difficult decisions, and, you know, I know, being new, that I've been very encouraged by the superintendent really bringing Joe and myself in early, and having conversations quite frequently, and really keeping us abreast of, of what's going on, so I, I know, I appreciate that, I know Joe does too, and that's what we have to do really working forward, because we all have some fiscal challenges, certainly Wenham does, and we're looking at ways to, you know, again, provide that high level of service, but at a different, at a different cost, at a reduced cost, so, and maybe there's ways that we can work together, you know, although it's, it's two communities and, and, you know, we're all in on this together, and maybe we could help each other out in the process, so having these type of discussions opens the door for that.
Absolutely. And I can promise you, we don't have a budget already prepared in our budget.
Good to hear, because neither do we. We're not there yet.
Put that right on the table. Okay, the next thing I wanna think about together is our norms. So we, it sounds like we're all in agreement that coming together sooner and often is, is a good strategy, will later, towards the end of the meeting, decide when we want our next meetings to be, so that everyone can mark their calendars and save the dates. But we know that high-functioning teams establish really clear norms for how they're going to collaborate. And so if you'll humor me a little bit, I just, the teacher in me is gonna come out and ask you to think independently for a minute about a time when you were on a team, it could be a work team, it could be a volunteer group, it could be on the Board of Selectmen or the School Committee or FinCom, and think about the, the worst team that you've ever been on. And this isn't normal for me, I don't usually start with a negative, but just go with it. So just take a couple of minutes to think about the worst team that you've ever been on, and what were some of the characteristics of that team that made it difficult for that to feel successful for you? And then we'll just share a couple ideas. So if you've ever had an unsuccessful team experience. And try to be as specific as you can. Anyone want to share? What made that experience so terrible?
No collaboration.
Okay, no collaboration.
Personal goals above the team goal.
Yeah.
So kind of putting your self-interests above the team, okay?
I had an unclear engagement model amongst the team, and those that we worked with.
Okay, could you say a little bit more about that?
Sure. Wasn't, wasn't clear who should be doing what in terms of messaging and communications, like kinda, who, who owned the role of delivering a message and retrieving feedback from others.
Okay. Anyone else want to add?
I think I had one that was similar, where there wasn't even a, an agreement about the process we would use, so some people were, thought we were working by committee, and other people thought, we don't need a committee, we'll just, people just do things, so the whole, just the process was not clear about how decisions would be made and actions would be taken.
Yeah, I kind of had something similar, lack of planning.
Lack of planning, that's what I, that's what I had last minute, sort of unclear who's gonna make the decisions, or lack of shared ownership, all kind of things that we said.
And actually coming into an organization where there was already a history and interpersonal conflict that got in the way of the organizations' ability to make decisions and take actions.
I think my experience was like Michelle's, she said it better than I, I would've said ego, but she said personal goals over, over group goals. I think particularly in our roles here, it's very important to stay focused on the group goals.
Particularly since we really have like three different sort of entities, right, but coming together for one common purpose. Alright, so take all that and like erase that out of your brain, let's forget about that, and think about the best team that you've ever been on. What made that a rewarding experience? Or made that a really good experience or productive experience? What did you have? What made that a good experience, being a part of an effective team?
You know, I was thinking of a capital project that I was working on in my, my previous employer, and, you know, we knew what the goal was, and then we clearly knew what each other's roles were, and everybody meeting their objectives really pulled it all together, and the end result, we had a great capital project, so, you know, it was, it was really everybody working together at that point to get there, so.
And I would add to that, high school team, a great coach, setting the goals, and teammates really enjoying working hard together for that goal, so, again, forty years ago could still be applied to any situation.
Definitely.
Yeah, it's similar, measurable and achievable goals through collaboration.
Feels good when you know what the targets are, and then we can all celebrate that success of hitting the target.
Yeah, 'cause I, I was gonna say this, kind of the same thing, you know, collaboration and information to make great decisions and able to get to those goals. And everybody worked evenly and knew what their jobs were, and mine was more for fundraising, so.
But you got it clear, you knew your role.
Knew what the role is, everybody had defined, the defined roles, you had a goal of where you want to be, and then you broke it down, and we met our goals.
Yeah, that shared leadership, and there's, I mean, that's just an A in what we do, what we're going to do here, because we each have our own sort of individual things to think about, but having, coming together and sharing that leadership. There's times when, you know, Joe might need to be facilitating the conversation, or Anthony, or me, or someone else, and just knowing that we can sort of step up and step back, I think is a sign of a good team, too.
I think that listening to each other too, and I think one of the things that sometimes happens in these environments is that, you know, I'm here and engaged in a good discussion about the school budget, and I want the schools to be successful, but at the same time, I have separate challenges that I also have to meet, and for all sides to understand that. So that, there may be times that I ask questions, or, you know, want to discuss something a little further, and it's not meant in a way to make you feel defensive, or make, meant as a way to make it look like I know something that I, more that I, it's just meant to just make sure that I'm helping you achieve your goals and meeting mine as well. And I- And I think that we all have to be cognizant of that with each other. When we, when we push each other, it's just to make the whole effort better. It's not to, you know, meant to be a personal attack or anything like that. I, I, as long as we're all in agreement that that's the way we'll work together, I think that, I think we'll be fine. Because we're all, you know, capable of, of positive communication with each other, so.
I think we need to encourage people to share their ideas and, and kind of call out questions so that everyone's on the same page with, you know, there should be like a pretty clear sense of accountability as to like who, who's doing what and when throughout this process. And, and definitely the discussion has to be open and, you know, differing viewpoints, I think, need to be encouraged. Challenge, right? That's through deliberation, that's what we're here to do. Publicly, that's our charge. That's right as, as elected and appointed officials. So, I think that we can also improve our process by challenging kind of the heuristics and like just the way that, the way that we're accustomed to doing things maybe not be the best way in many cases.
And that push each other. That's part of the team, you know, team effectiveness is that we don't just accept what has always been. And I think too, separate from effective teams, but just knowing the complexity of the work that we're about to engage in or engaging in. Sometimes you asking a question that I might not be thinking to say because I'm so enmeshed, you know, I'm so embedded. We're gonna be talking about the budget twenty-four hours a day with all kinds of people. And might think that it's already been said in a way that the community should understand. But you all will come at the conversation at, from a different angle. So, we'll certainly be open to that and welcome to that. And also wanna know when we need to maybe come to a town meeting to understand what your challenges are or how you're working through the budget as well. And that's the, I think, the, one of the many values of having those liaison positions, right? So, we can have that two-way communication. So, just in the essence of time, I mean, you could spend two hours developing norms. We're not going to. I just took a stab at it and I put five together that I want you to honestly, you know, kind of have your voice represented here. This is just to get us started so you can poke some holes in it. At the end, I would like us to have consensus that, okay, these are the norms that we can live with. So, the first one is take an inquiry stance. That means coming at the budget with questions and true authentic wonder. Being hard on the content and soft on the people. So, remembering that, you know, we're all doing the best that we can with the information that we have. And, you know, at the end of the day, our relationships are what's gonna matter most. So, how do we be hard on the content, ask those tough questions, but be kind to one another? Share the air so that when we do come together, it's not any one voice speaking more than the other. Or another way to think of that is, it should say step up, then step back. So, once you have a moment to speak, then you give time for others to add to that. Be kind, specific and honest. One of the things that I've been hearing just in some of my conversation with community members, I always like to ask like, "What's the number one thing that I could do to be most successful for our kids?" And I've heard be honest a lot. So, Vinnie and I thought that would be a nice one to add. And then assume positive intent. You know, our, we each have our own positions and we're here to advocate for what either the schools need. You know, that's, it can always be our position, what's best for the kids, what, what each community needs. But we have to assume that that's all coming from a place of good and service. And so, assume positive intent. So, anything you'd like to add or change or wordsmith a little there? I'm gonna edit in live time. Made it super tiny so that might be hard to see, but.
Are you circulating this? Or have, you have it already, but you will later, right? So, I don't need to?
No, you don't need to write it down. Once it's all done, I'll say like, here's what we said about our purpose, here's what we said about our norms. And then goals and dates.
I, I think they're well, well-stated.
Vinnie and I together. I wanted to insert some like cheesy background music and stuff, but Vinnie said no.
Thank you, Vinnie.
Anything missing here? So, we could all live with these?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we're good.
All right, if you change your mind later on after further reflection, just let us know. Okay, so now, again, about ten minutes just to have some open conversation about what you might currently know about your FY21 needs and/or some limitations that we know about. The school's happy to talk about this first if that just says an icebreaker or if either of you have sort of some insight as to what's coming down the pike.
I'm happy to go first. So, just-
Bad news, good news.
Yeah.
Good news, I wasn't expecting.
So, a couple of weeks ago, I, I gave a really quick financial overview, financial forecast for what we were looking at for the next fiscal year. And right now Wenham's faced with a million-dollar structural deficit. So, right now, what we're obviously looking at is, is the revenue and ways that we can enhance revenue growth and also our expenses, a way we can obviously make some reductions. Wenham has had a history of using free cash to supplement the operating budget. You know, personally in my presentation, I would like us to see go away from that. Because what we're seeing is our free cash is going down, which means we're really creating too tight of a budget. So, we're not gonna have that free cash to count on to, at some point, to offset the budget. So, we have to really dig deep in how we're currently running the town and ways to do it better. So, we have some challenges and we're really working at doing that. And it's gonna be some unpopular conversations that we have to have in town, but they're necessary. And, and, you know, like you said, they're, they're conversations that you have to respect. That we're gonna present different ideas, but, you know, ultimately it's what the town wants to, wants to do. So, we, we have some challenges. I don't know if Alex wants to add anything to that.
So, and I agree with those statements that you made, Anthony. The, you know, the permanent levy limit increases that we've had the past couple of years, of course, the current fiscal year and the prior fiscal year, brings us to a tax rate of eighteen oh two with a pretty sizable market value increase this year as well through a, through a measure in this project and some, some enhancements to market value, which resulted in higher property taxes that, that basically we're just keenly aware of our residents, you know, being faced with and, and at times having, you know, challenges with. Salt, you know, laws, state and local tax deduction laws have, have put kind of the median tax bill for the town of Wenham squarely in focus as being one against you're not getting other tax benefits or any deduction for other tax expenditures. And we're pretty well aware of how we ended up in this situation. The, some of, the good news is that some of the pressures that have, that have put us in this situation are seeming to abate a little bit. Some of, some of, for example, the school enrollment trend. Regardless of what the numbers that we get pretty soon for the current enrollment year turn out to be. We're pretty much over the hurdle from the standpoint of a rolling average. I mean, if you just do the math, you'll get it, it probably will. Even, even if it worsens slightly, in the grand scheme of things, it should play out in a manner that's slight, somewhat favorable to Wenham. But we don't, we don't wanna focus solely on that. We wanna look at our overall costs for our operating budget at town Wenham. Look at opportunities for revenue, which are scarce, frankly, with the tax costs falling squarely at the shoulders of the residents in town for whom we're, we're stewards of their, of their tax dollars. So, there are some, some opportunities for potential revenue increases that we're gonna be talking about in public with the select board and with Anthony as FinCom meets over the coming months. But the one thing I'll add as to the, the nature of the structural deficit that we're in and the level of it is that last year at this time, we were in a similar situation. So, two years ago, you might recall, we had an operating override, approximately and a half of three thirty-ish, three hundred and thirty-something thousand. Forgive me for not remembering exactly. And on the order of five seventy, I think, last, for current fiscal year, does that sound right? With, with a similar projected budget shortfall, structural deficit at, around this time, give or take, last year. So, so I, I'm not entirely giving up hope that we're a million in the red. Although at this early stage, indications are certainly not for excess levy capacity.
We're not in a structural deficit. So, that's the good news. That doesn't mean that it's all rosy either. We continue to have the same challenges as far as limited opportunities for increased taxation. Things that we thought we had coming such as the host community agreement with a medical marijuana producer have now gone away. So, we won't have that opportunity to capture new revenue. We are not projecting any significant new growth in our tax base because there's only one small project ongoing and it's being phased over a period of years, so that won't impact us. We're recognizing the same potential for enrollment shift to come back and negatively inhibit us in the future. And we have a number of capital concerns that, in addition, that alone would be a concern for us long-term. And that in addition with what the schools' needs are and our need to shoulder a burden of, a portion of that burden for you is daunting. So, the good news is, we are not currently in a, in a deficit position. But we need to be very cognizant of what's coming and we need to plan better for it. We've had some good decision-making by Marissa and the FinCom and the previous Boards of Selectmen. I, even prior to my, so that I'm giving them full credit. We've got ourselves with some strong financial policies and things that have us okay right now. But we need to continue to, to watch what we spend. So, we are cognizant of what the ti, we're, we're learning what the schools need. We are aware of some of Wenham's issues. We're partners in a lot of things. So, we need to continue to work together so that Wenham can come out of its situation and we can stay in a good situation all at the same time.
So, in terms of the schools, it is October twenty-ninth and you know that we're, we have a three hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit. So, the expectation is that that will only increase as student needs flush out and we learn more about some pending cases that we have for student needs and personnel needs in terms of maternity leaves or sicknesses and things like that that happen every year. And we still have five new employees that are determining their benefits package. And so, that could, there's upwards to a hundred and twenty thousand dollar potential impact with that. So, with that in mind, remembering that the needs that are here now, these unbudgeted needs that are the lead cause of the deficit will likely be necessary in the next fiscal year as well. So, that alone, just thinking about the impact that has on our budget, of course, is, is something that we're thinking a lot about. The increase in the needs specialized services for students is astonishing and that's not unique to Wenham. It is something that we're hearing across the state and across the country, frankly, that more and more students are coming in requiring more specialized services. And that also is causing us to use our space in a really different way. So, you will absolutely see a capital budget from the school department this year. Our new Director of Facilities, who started on October, September fourth, just presented to the Capital Subcommittee an updated capital plan. That's not the same thing as the budget that will be presented, but it's a starting point. So, really be thinking over ten years, what are some of our capital needs? We also talked a bit in that, in the last capital meeting about, you know, needing to generate or needing to establish some sort of capital reserve account. Is this the time to do that or not is a conversation we need to have. And of course, there's still OPEB, you know, like out there that we need to really come up with a strategic plan around that. It'd also be really great, again, if we, once we get positioned into a place where we can create some sort of special education reserve account to help supplement some of those unforeseen needs or unknown needs that tend to come up year after year. So, those are some of the things that are, we know, kind of big items and there's lots of choices to make within those needs in addition to the input that we'll get from the principals and the directors in terms of their ideas around new investments. And new investments doesn't always mean new money. Trying to really encourage people to look at staffing and make sure that they're using it, using our human resources to its maximum potential. So, if there's an opportunity to reduce a position, but there's a need that's being unmet, is there a way for us to do that in a budget-neutral way or at least in like a level budget sort of way? All conversations that we're just starting to have and really digging deeply into, you know, what's behind every number that's in our budget and making sure that we can justify and explain it in a way that's really clear to all of you and to our community. That's kind of our limitations and needs all balled into one. I don't know if you folks wanna add anything to that?
Yeah, that's, that's the list.
That was a nice summation. Or accurate, a pretty accurate, I should say, nice, pretty accurate.
And it's really important for us to hear what is going on with each of the towns so that we're taking that into consideration when we're putting forward our number. And one of the thing, as we talk about sort of the, the way the budget develops, that I would like clarity on is we're planning to, I'm just gonna share this real quick, not that you can see this, this is more for me to reference. But we're planning to present the tentative budget to the school committee on January eighth. Working back from that, April fourth, I believe, will be the town meeting date. So that, but, but when we present the tentative budget, like is that the first number that's out there is sort of the number that sticks? Or is it truly a tentative budget that, like, we can be handing over our proposal to the school, school committee and then they can make some decisions about what, where the final number lands? What's sort of the perception or the past practice around that?
I think past practice has been that there's been limited time for changes from the recommended, the administration-recommended tentative budget for the school committee to then really delve into. It's a sense I get. And, I mean, I welcome your view on this, but it was sort of late in the game. It, it felt like maybe with the time for, for a complex thirty million dollar-ish budget to, to hear from it and then vote on it and, and over the course of perhaps two meetings, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken.
Well-
On a preliminary basis.
I'll say that the timing prescribed in the regional agreement doesn't lend itself well to adjustments throughout the process, right? So, you have to work, so part of what I think limits us is the regional agreement and how it does prescribe certain dates by which we need to present certain pieces of information, right? So, and then you have the starting point of when school starts, understanding what current expenses are, how they're gonna be forecasted. You basically start school and then you start pretty much two months later or even a month later, start working on the next year's budget. So, it doesn't really lend itself well to even a lot of analysis for current year budget. So, this is a, this is, this is, I don't, I don't wanna say like this is beyond our means a little bit, but it kinda is just by virtue of the regional agreements, which may be something that we wanna look at.
And does that, I, I know there's various-
Because it does say forty-five days, fifteen days, you get up to seventy-five days, which is how we got to-
January eighth.
January eighth.
So, that's the earliest you could.
No, that's, that's the latest.
That's the latest.
We approved a tentative budget, just a tentative. And I agree with you, Alex said, we haven't, even the school committee hasn't been able to get its hand on the budget and really understand it as well. It was presented and we couldn't really do much changes 'cause, just because of our limitations. We're hoping to change that process by having a finance working group and then to really understand it and get a, a, a budget workshop Julie's working on so we can understand what's going on, the mechanics of the budget to understand. And so, it's not, you know, just like feel like, okay, here's your tentative budget, okay, agreed to it. And I felt, and I've, and I will say, I'll be the first one to say, I've always had a hard time approving a tentative budget because just looking at and then approving that same night, I wasn't able to review information, financial information other than to hope the person, hope the previous administration put it together properly. And that's my feeling. And I've been on, on the school committee the longest, I've been on six years now.
So, so from our perspective, and, you know, I, I'd agree with you a hundred percent that the agreement and the dates makes it a little challenging. You got to the January eighth, I think, as you're proposing is for the tentative budget this year. Well, last year, by recollection, I checked my notes in my calendar for appointments from last year and I think we had a, a first meeting with the FinComs and the Boards of Selectmen and myself and Finance Directors and from both towns and the entire school committee on, I think it was December sixth. And less than two weeks later, the Superintendent and the Finance Director at the time made a presentation- made a presentation of what their budget requests were gonna be. So, there was, we had, I think I had about fifteen minutes to speak at that meeting on December fourth. Two weeks later, there was a budget presentation. There was no real opportunity unless our people just came and sat in the audience during the school committee meeting to interact with that. And and then you guys voted in January. And it was like, okay. So, the process there doesn't seem to have openings for interaction. And that's all we're asking for. So, the establishment of a of a committee, a subcommittee of groups like this getting together, exchanging information and ideas so that we're not just, you know, we're not just sitting down in front of you in early December and saying, you know, these are our challenges, hope you can live within them. And then, two weeks later, we get presented with a budget that's been prepared by the administration, shared with you for the first time, then we don't really have an opportunity to really respond.
Right. I I will say that with all due respect, that the school committee preserves and reserves its right to see the full budget before it's released to anybody else.
Absolutely, and I wouldn't
There is that timing issue. I mean, you guys would operate the same way too. Like, there's no expectation that we would see
Nope, absolutely. I'm not, not
For the SLUG board have had a chance to weigh in.
And we're not proposing to take away any of that, um, you know, but just discussions, going through the, hey, look, this is one of the challenges we're seeing. You know, us having an opportunity in a in a setting like this to say, you know, so what about that money that you invested in special education programs inside the school district two years ago? What, how's that shaping up? Is it showing any of the benefit you were projecting at the time? You know, what can we see? It seems like SPED is still going up, so we thought that was gonna help mitigate it. So, why isn't it? What what kind of assessment are you doing? How do we take that information back to our communities so that they don't feel like they're not getting the whole picture? You know what I mean? And again, it's not, so, you know, how do you use circuit breaker? You know, how much is available there? You know, things like that, just so that there's more information in there for a better understanding. You know, we understand your process. We, and again, you have your statutory authority to do your process the way it is, as we do. But we just wanna be more understanding and informed about it so that, you know, we can work with you in in a collaborative way.
And so, the timing is certainly a challenge. Um, a- at this point, just we've already started looking at personnel. We already had one meeting assessing all of our personnel needs and looking at enrollment projections. That's sort of like staff one for me in the budget process. It's the biggest part of our budget. Um, and so, getting all of the principals and directors really thinking about, you know, who do we currently have? Who do we think might be retiring? Who do we think? Who's non-professional status? Who's doing well? Who needs support? Like, all of those things, right? Really protecting that investment. And it's really about ROI. You know, making sure that we're on top of our personnel. Um, and then what's happening now is that they're going through their budgets line by line. They're working with department leads and other teacher leaders to develop those discretionary counts, if you will, which is really professional development and consumable materials, right? Um, and then, of course, IT and capital. That's all going on as we speak. Um, then Vinnie and I are scheduling one-on-one conversations with each of the um principals and or directors who have direct budget responsibilities. Um, and there, we're gonna go through that with them line by line. And so, that's like two solid weeks of one-on-one conversations with those folks. Um, we've budgeted two hours per person, but we'll see how that goes. Um, so, we're not even gonna begin pulling the budget together till those conversations are are completed. Simultaneously, they're also thinking about those new investment proposals. And we literally will, together as a pre-K twelve team, spend a day going through each of those proposals and then prioritizing them. Um, not because all of them or any of them will even get in the budget, but it's really important for the community to know, like, what are our unmet needs and where are we making, how are we making decisions? And again, it's also really important for our teachers and our leaders to constantly be thinking about how to continuously improve and what are those incremental investments? Even though the answer this year might be no, we still need them to be thinking in those ways. Um, and we need the community to understand that. So, it'll be early December before Vinnie and I even have all of that information to begin pulling a budget together. So, our hope is that on January eighth, um, and this is ideally, we would have a workshop with the school committee prior to the tentative budget vote, but the schedule just isn't working out like that. So, our hope is that we can, as the leadership team, put together a student-centered, fiscally responsible budget that takes into consideration all of the constraints that we know exist and present that to the school committee. In essence, sort of handing it over to them and saying, it's now your budget, we're the the educational experts, we've made our recommendations. Um, and now there's decisions to be made. And really want that to be a tentative budget and not whatever that number is, I don't know what it will be, but that that doesn't become the number, but that becomes the beginning of the conversation. And then, what we're proposing is um a two-part workshop on the fourteenth and fifteenth where the school committee will spend three hours on each night with the leadership team. And each principal, each director will present based in like ten minutes, it's like speed dating. Um, here's the ROI, here's the FY twenty investment, and here's some of the return on that investment we're already seeing to date, knowing that it's January. Um, here's what's in this budget FY twenty-one, and here's our unmet needs. And what are the implications of that? So, like, kind of those three things, each person will go through. And Vinnie and I will speak very little during that, those two-part workshops, but they'll be hearing directly from. And the idea is to make sure that they deeply understand what's in this budget and what's not.
Julie, is that at the principal level, you said, for those two, three-hour workshops?
Yep, it's all, it's the whole leadership team, which includes principals, um, directors, anyone who has a budget responsibility center. Um, and th- that'll be after you hear a high-level presentation from Vinnie and I on January eighth. And then, we have a public hearing scheduled for January twenty-second, I believe, um, which will be right before a school committee workshop so that anyone from the public can come and express concerns. They'll have had the the opportunity to either attend the workshop or view the workshop, so they too know what's in and what's not. Folks can advocate directly to the school committee about what they think should be or shouldn't be in the budget. Um, however, those public hearings usually go in in our community. Um, and then on February twelfth, again, because it has to be within thirty days from the tentative budget vote, based on the regional agreement, they have to approve a final budget. And then, we have time from February twelfth until April to come together to talk about a get-out-the-vote strategy, how are we going to reach out to the community and communicate um all of our collective needs so that on April fourth, we can have
We, so our our timeframe then starts to get short. So, from February twelfth until Marissa, Marissa and I were looking at a a dra- draft budget calendar today that were running by the Board of Selectmen and the advi- and the Finance and Advisory Committee this week. But basically, if you look at the first week of Ma- March is when we had, they have to then make their decisions and recommendations so that we can get it put together in both the warrant and the budget and then have that sent to the printers and all. And the finance committee can write, draft their book of recommendations. So, it becomes, we become constrained by time because I have to, in order to get the stuff printed, it has to be to the printers, a minimum of two weeks before town meeting, so that we can have it back a week before, so I can get it in the mail. So, it, so, I, you know, that will leave us some time between February twelfth and like March third.
Yeah.
Um, so that's the time where if we could have an opportunity to plug in again. Um, you know, before you, well, you're gonna vote on the twelfth.
Yeah, you can't, guess, once it's voted on, that's the budget. Yeah.
Is there ti- is there, is there an opportunity between January eighth and February twelfth for our group to plug in again? And and raise, you know, concerns, just, you know, if there are any. Um, you know, I know there's a a big demand on time, but it it uh it's on all of our time, but i- it it does make it feel like it's more
And you're gonna wanna check out, I mean, also here, you know, the budget workshops, so it's in the season, they're between now
The fifteenth and February twelfth, so, a little
So, typically
Which means that's right in the middle of the time, I'll be presenting my budget recommendations to the, fortunate thing is right a week before I plan to present budget recommendations. I'll at least know what your budget recommendations are.
It's a true majority for the school committee to be able to vote on the budget, right? So, it's not just majority of the folks. We need to make sure we have enough time to get all the numbers together for one more vote.
I'd hope you'd have all members at all of these meetings. These are critical.
Yeah, I I agree, I agree.
And one of the other things we were thinking about in developing that schedule was, I just think optics, like, having a public hearing on the twenty-second of January and voting on the same night doesn't look like, does not look good, right? It doesn't give you a chance to really hear public comment and process.
No. The discretionary nature of the public hearing, I think it can be called, okay, that's enough, now we're moving to our meeting. And that kind of curtails the
Right.
The the nature of the public hearing component. And and I, I feel as though it warrants a bit more of the the five families approach to to meeting more formally, if we can get something in between preliminary
I love the connotation of the five families there.
One thing I would, I would drop in as a longer-term strategy is, again, to look at the regional agreement. You know, I've been on the school committee for like, I'll be almost four years now. And it's something that's always been on the agenda, but never, we haven't just had the time to focus on it. But like, issues like this really hamper all of our abilities to be nimble. And in in these kind of constraints, like, you kinda wanna be as nimble as possible. And like, when you're locked into certain things, I mean, just in the quick couple of minutes that we've had this conversation, all of our windows is just, you know, really strong.
But there are some laws besides the regional agreement, uh, the forty-five, you know, the forty-five days. So, it's really, the only thing that really is flexible if we were to open up the regional agreement is voting the tentative budget. And that, we could get by if everyone agreed that we could forego that or, you know, to vote in a tent. Because before we changed the regional agreement to nineteen fourteen, made that change, we did not vote in a tentative budget.
Hmm.
So, and I could be wrong a day, but I'm sure someone will let me know. Like, I'll give a text, like, no, but I'm pretty sure it was nineteen fourteen we changed the regional agreement and added voting in a tentative budget and before that. So, it gave us more flexibility of what we can do with budget meetings, whatnot, improve. We did have a tentative budget vet and presented around that time, but we didn't have to vote it in. And it became like locked in because the timeline became so tight now from there. And the townsfolk said, okay, that's doubtful. And then that's just kind of what's happened at least the last five years.
Hmm.
So, the st- the tight time constraints, uh, maybe somebody, Alex or or Joe, it's really driven by an early town meeting. The last two communities I was in, they had their town meetings in May. That that's gives an extra month. Uh, because of the early, like Joe said, we do have those tight uh timelines where we have to get the information to the printer and do everything that's necessary to get, prepare for town meeting and and getting that warrant out there, so.
We used to have a main town meeting.
Yeah, I'm curious in the history.
So, but the thing is still, even if you have a a main town meeting, you still have that forty fi- uh thirty days, forty-five days, and seventy-five days. It's still built in. So, it has nothing to do with if you have a town meeting in May or April. The reason we moved it to April was because lack of attendance in May.
In May.
Because spring sports
Start up and the parents don't show up.
Kids who are in sports when in elementary, spring sports started in May. And nobody showed up. You can barely, at least for Wenham, I'm a Wenham resident, you could barely get a quorum. You're literally counting, okay, we need two more people to come in. And you would start calling, please, a Wenham
Attendance is already hard enough, man. It's April. I mean, I'd go, 'cause I'm obligated to, but
So, so that's why we moved to April to get better attendance and not have issues with the attendance. So, you almost hoped for a really rainy day in May, so that sports would be canceled because high school's not canceled. But for the younger kids, it was canceled. So, that's what happened. But there is still those time constraints within the regional agreement and also per the law to have at least that thirty fi- thirty and forty-five
Forty-five, yeah.
Day, the forty-five, I'm like looking, trying to think of all those numbers. But then, the seventy-five day was, that's the only thing that really became, becomes flexible if everybody agrees that we don't have to vote in a tentative budget. Other than that, it's kind of set
Well, and as long as we can agree that tentative is tentative, it's a proposal, you know, that's, to me, what matters the most.
So, in the recent, in having gone through this process for five years as well, uh, tentative basically sticks, it's deemed final, there's limited opportunity to delve into it, to understand the key components a couple clicks deeper by the school committee. And that's a daunting task, I recognize. So, it seems as though you've, so Julie, you've you've spelled out a lot of the process, I think, that what you and Vinnie will be following with your budget process, which I is appreciative of of awareness of that. Um, but, and we didn't describe our budget process, but we can in in time. And and also, the fact that you're adding these workshops, I think that's new this year, correct?
That's helpful.
So, that that is definitely um helps to, I think, surface some of the details related to the budget to the public. Uh, albeit maybe not with the um um town elected and appointed folks, but um on the fourteenth and fifteenth, between that and the eighth, we at least have an opportunity to better understand. Would be great if we had another hearing, I think, just to echo what Joe said. An, I'm sorry, another opportunity to meet, um, in addition to the hearing, but would have to see how the calendar works out.
So, we were suggesting a me- an us coming together again after the the tentative vote. Unless you feel like there's a reason to come together before that, maybe to talk about the town's process more since we didn't do that much tonight. Um, or, and then the, my wonder was, do we wanna meet before the public hearing or is it more beneficial to meet after the public hearing? Because then you've heard the public um thoughts on it, assuming that we'll have a a large attendance um at that public hearing. And then, another opportunity to come together maybe after the final vote, because then we'll know exactly what the school committee has voted in the budget. And we can talk about strategy in terms of communication and things like that.
Because I come to you guys. I mean, I've I've attended the S- the SLUG board, I I did a budget, you know, Alex had called a thing and on the Wenham side, I did a thing there. Um, you know, so we, I will get the other school committee members and deploy them as needed, you know. Um, I'm not the chair, but I, you know.
You're the chair of this committee.
Chair of this committee, that's right. The funny one. So, you know, so so there is, so we wanted to sort of think this through because, again, education is really key to, education for the public and also for you guys. So, you know, if it if it is more, if it helps facilitate attending your meetings, you know, just let us know, we'll we'll do what we can. You know, we're more than happy to do that.
Yeah, that might be a way, particularly for the finance committees, um, to get en- engaged if you wanted to have your liaisons to the finance committees attend their meetings, you know, sometime in between, leading up to it and explain kind of what's going on. Um, you know, once I have my budget guidance and uh and budget calendar established after consultation with the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom, we'll gladly share that through the superintendent to the school committee, so you're aware of Hamilton's timeline. Um, and, you know, looking forward to plugging in when we can, how we can. It's another small group meeting like this, happy to do that. Um, I, it doesn't sound like you have a December meeting with everybody planned, as had been done in the past, which I'm, again, if it's only gonna be formulaic, then I don't mind skipping it. I prefer, much prefer meetings that accomplish something. Um, so
We will have a December capital meeting. I believe we have one on the calendar already.
Yeah, we have a regular standing monthly meeting of the capital projects.
Which could easily become, you know, more folks to the conversation. It's just hard for us to know. I mean, by then, we will have a pretty good draft together. Um.
So, actually, Julie, let me ask you this, let's think about the capital stuff. So, we will have a CapEx budget being presented this year as well. So, when does the capital committee present there to the, to the, um
That's new to us this year. We, as a new capital committee, uh, we're organizing the budget. I think I, you know, I meant to bring a copy of my worksheet with me and I didn't. Did you bring what we wanted? I had a date in there for when capital committee had to have their recommendations to me, which I think is uh early, mid this January, so that I can incorporate it into the budget proposal for the uh FinCom and Board of Selectmen. I have a requirement to be done there at the end of January, beginning of of February, so.
Our goal is to have the capital budget presentation to the full school committee in December at the second school committee workshop.
They'd be very happy to plug into that part of your process and you'll probably see
Yeah, Bill, Bill will already attend our meeting, his meeting.
Yeah, yeah. And so, I'm sure he'll be tracking that and be aware of that, so, um, that'll be good because then he'll have more information than I do.
Right. Trying to like layer the information because it's a lot to
Yeah.
Process that one.
And also, we added this year, um, you know, adding on to um what you were talking about, having liaisons. We, this year, we, a part of our communication collaboration goals, um, we have, we voted in that our working group, um, liaisons between the FinCom and Board of Selectmen to
Thank you. I ma- I meant to thank you for that earlier at the beginning, but, yeah, we appreciate that.
So, to help
Yeah, yeah. I think that's right.
So, the last question I have um is, do we typically set any sort of goal, shared goal in terms of the budget around percentages or like how the final tax rate gets calculated? Or is there anything like that we need to know?
So, we have historically assumed early on, uh, a level service
So, we have historically assumed early on, uh, a level services operating budget increase for the schools just as a plug, right, in our process, and, and generally, it's been in the order of three percent. What does that mean? That's merely just a placeholder until we learn otherwise. But understanding that the rate of increase of what comprises fifty percent or more of our town's budget is very closely watched. We, we like to not be surprised too far to the, to the upside on operating increases. It's on, it's only a temporary number that's in there. Our numbers from the town cycle change meaningfully.
Is that right?
Right, as we, as we move to apartment heads.
Marissa, you can, you can speak to that, but it's basically the same thing. We, we put in a plug, plug in a placeholder and then wait to see what the school makes up.
Is your placeholder also three percent?
Uh, Marissa, what was our placeholder?
Um, I don't think we, between three and five percent that town will be going with.
I would like to see, um, just as a, kind, just at a high level, not to get into details too much, but the separation out of the, um, uh, debt expenses from the operating at times when those shift and those change. So at the beginning of this fiscal year, I think, on the order of six hundred thousand was folded in from, from past, from the middle school project, from debt savings there, Vinny would know better than I do, but I believe it's six hundred K, was folded into the operating budget. So it would be nice to the, uh, the main kind of one-pager, that's sort of the overlay of the budget, um, and perhaps you're using something entirely different, but the one that kind of breaks down the net and the assessments at the bottom in a few boxes and kind of the high-level categories. Broke it out, the debt versus operating in such a way that, at the end of the day, the percentage increase is net of those two things. And I, I'm, I'm not gonna do this justice trying to describe it.
That's okay.
But, um, the manner which the, the debt is accounted for, um, seemed to sort of subsidize the operating budget last year and, and make the, um, percentage increase meaningfully lower than in actuality with that, that debt savings. So I would like to, um, pursue, not to tell you how to run your budget spreadsheets, but pursue a, 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 a different lens on it, one that, um, kind of articulates better than I am now verbally, how, how debt savings at times of debt rolling.
Was that a one-time opportunity because it was rolling off?
It was, and that time has, has gone, as it relates to that, that debt savings, and that's unfortunate. Uh, because I would have liked to have, had that presented in a way that was a bit more, um, a bit clearer in terms of the impact.
Essentially, we know, we, we essentially appropriate a bottom-line budget, but to understand why it's being appropriated and where that's going to is helpful to us. And it's helpful to us in making, you know, kind of educating the public, educating our town meeting members, but also understanding why things would be, but yet, you can understand how, from the other side, that kind of process looks like murky.
Yes.
And it, it's nuanced.
We wanna, and we wanna avoid that kind of appearance, right, so.
Yep. All right. Well, noticing the time, we didn't select meeting dates, but I figured rather than us all try to pull out our calendars, I will shoot a couple dates out there and we'll see how they work. Um, maybe I'll do like a doodle poll or something, so we can, can I get that down? When we come together next time, are there any specific things that you want from us on the school side or that we can expect from either towns?
I think that, you know, I'll pull something out of our previous meeting of, of the administration staffs. You know, we understand that one of the bigger drivers, and you alluded to it, but didn't really get into specifics, one of your big drivers is, uh, special education costs, you know. More understanding about that, what might be at the cause of it, to the extent that you're able to explain that, what you perceive or, or expects, expect or anticipate to, um, happen in the coming year with that and why, and what might be possible to try to keep that in check into the future, right? We all wanna make sure the kids get the services they need. Nobody's gonna advocate in a position against that, but understanding it and why is important.
Yeah.
It's so hard.
Yeah.
Advocating.
No, no.
That's the family that we're trying.
Yeah, this has to be done.
No, even if it's investing in some program that would eventually save us money down the road.
Yep.
Not necessarily just trying to cut it.
Yep.
And that's what we're, we're gonna do, try to figure out.
Yeah, so I think that's what Joe's asking for.
Sure.
Yeah.
Absolutely. And actually, on November sixth, Michelle and I won't be at the school committee meeting because we're attending the MASC conference, but our Director of Student Services will be doing a public presentation, um, just talking about student services trends, um, across the board. And there will be an opportunity for the, the school committee will have a separate workshop, um, executive session with our district, school district attorneys to kind of understand some of the litigious factors.
And this ju- this idea just occurred to me, but, uh, you know, considering that everybody here is volunteers, um, and, uh, we have a lot of night meetings, and, well, not everybody here is volunteer, I was gonna say. Anthony and I are volunteers. But, um, but a lot of the folks around the table are volunteers, and, um, the lots of night meetings and things that get- Once that presentation's been made, is there an opportunity for you to share that PowerPoint with us, so that could generate some questions for us? So the next time we get to meeting, you know, get, get together as a group, we can actually have, even if we're not able to attend that meeting, have the opportunity to review the PowerPoint, you know, and prepare.
Yeah, I can certainly share it with you and then give you kind of the window in the meeting when the presentation happened. Because I think a lot of times, at least, at least for me, you can see, I would just put pictures in my slides, so having the slide deck isn't always gonna be-
So your PowerPoint isn't gonna be that helpful to me.
That helpful. Um, but, and I, I encourage our leadership team to do the same, 'cause just slides with a bunch of words aren't, um, they're good. You know, if we wanna written report, that's one thing, if a presentation looks different. But, um, I will certainly make sure that you, you get that, and then you can disseminate it out with like the window to watch, for those who are wanting to hear the back kind of presentation to it. Sure. All right. Any other thoughts, comments?
I wish Anthony had talked more. It makes it seem like I, I really have a lot to say. Yeah.
Just gotta get a motion to your chair.
I move that the Hamilton-Wenham Regional School Committee Capital Planning Working Group adjourned at eight sixteen.
David? All right, thanks, everyone.
Thank you, everyone, thank you.